Okay, 6.10. Our 10:00 AM item, consideration A, consideration of presentation of the Lake County Community Wildfire Protection Plan, and B, consideration of approval of the Lake County Community Wildfire Protection Plan and authorize the chair to sign. This item is from our admin office and I, we have our climate resiliency officer, Teri Loggins, to present.
Thank you, I'm very excited to finally bring this to your board. I'm going to get some assistance with sharing the presentation, thank you so much. Of course, super.
Chiefs, would you like to also come up and join? This is a joint project. Do you want to come sit up here or? Okay.
They gave a look of no.
It's my fault, I mentioned.
They're on it too, right?
Yes, yes, this is. Come on, have a seat up here, Chief.
So as your board knows, thank you Chief Seansio, the Lake County Resource Conservation District for a number of years had the responsibility of housing and creating the Community Wildfire Protection Plan, otherwise known as the CWPP. And so let me go to. There we go. So this particular, this update, the one that we had was from 2009. It took a couple of years to complete the update. The revisions on the 2009 CWPP began in 2021 and continued into 2022. It was, like I mentioned, it was created initially by the Lake County Resource Conservation District. During the public comment period, the process was handed to the County of Lake in coordination with the RCD. And the county and the RCD held two workshops, one that was via Zoom for the general public, and the other which was for tribal nations and governments to gather more input. Like the RCD, the staffing capacity and resources of the county were limited to complete the task of incorporating public comments, of which there were hundreds. After the hiring of myself, the Chief Climate Resiliency Officer, I convened Clerk, the Clear Lake Environmental Research Center, the American Red Cross Community Adaptation Program, North Coast Opportunities through their epic Emergency Preparedness in Communities Program, and the new contractors for the RCD to go through all the public comments, put them in a semblance of order, and then incorporate them and give, once we went through that process, which took, you know, meeting weekly for a couple of months, I sent the plan back around to all the fire protection districts for their comments. And so it was collaboratively developed with the public. It identifies and prioritizes areas for hazard fuel reduction and recommends measures to reduce the ignitability of structures throughout the area, addressed in the plan. And so, the plan's purpose, of course, is, number one, to update and streamline the 2009 CWPP, which was, can't remember offhand, it's been a while since I looked at, but it was over 300 pages, so it's down to less than 100 pages. And it's meant to be a living document and was designed so that the appendices can be updated without the need to update the entire plan and bring it back before your board to get approval. Local nonprofits, the Lake County Community Risk Reduction Authority, JPA, which includes all of the fire protection districts, tribal nations, cities, and public water purveyors, and the RCD are all including CWPP mitigation actions into grant funding opportunities, such as the Community Wildfire Defense Grant, of which Clerk, I'm going to point to Will over there, secured $9.8 million last year to begin action on several of the mitigation actions that are in Appendix A. And so we need to get this approved before that grant is due again in, at the end of this month. As those actions are completed in the appendices, they'll be updated, updated and newly identified projects are identified, will be added under the direction of the County of Lake and the RRA. And so we, you know, we're all very familiar with our fire map, and that's just to 2020. The communities, so the planning area boundaries, the project, the projects in Appendix A correspond to planning area boundaries, which correspond to the fire protection districts. We had some questions, and I wondered as well, is why didn't they align with our area plans? But that's the reason, because the fire protection district boundaries don't match up to our area plan boundaries necessarily. There's close. Each community was given a threat level code to help prioritize projects. As your board is aware, we are awaiting the finalization of CAL FIRE's Fire Hazard Severity Zone Maps. My understanding is that it will be completed when CAL FIRE addresses each of the LRAs or local responsibility areas in the state. And LRAs correspond to fire protection, local fire protection districts, it's what we're responsible for locally. The Critical Facilities and Assets at Risk List come directly from the 2018 Natural Hazard Mitigation Plan, as OES is still awaiting final approval on the updated plan, which should be approved very, in a matter of moments, per Leah in the OES. And again, these are the fire protection districts and who give comment as part of the CWPP. In addition to the fire protection districts, of course, it includes CAL FIRE, LNU, and the U.S. Forest Service. And so the county, OES, is the lead agency for local emergency management efforts in the county. They coordinate, mitigate, coordinates mitigation planning, preparedness, and response to large-scale incidents. And then we list in their emergency notifications, the official ones are Lake Co Alerts or NEXL, which you can sign up for through the sheriff's website. Genesis Protect, formerly known as Zone Haven, make sure you know your zone, we still use that. And then there's an app, which is not official information but can be helpful, WatchDuty. So that information is in the plan. We have community fire safe organizations. There are currently three fire safe councils and 19 fire wise communities in Lake County. CERT, the Community Emergency Response Team, which educates and trains volunteers about disaster preparedness for hazards, is organized by NCO, and trains volunteers in basic disaster response skills, such as fire safety, light search and rescue, team organization, and disaster medical operations. CERT offers a consistent nationwide approach to volunteer training and organization that professional responders can rely on during disaster situations, allowing them to focus on more complex tasks. The Lake County COAD, which is Community Organizations Active in Disaster, has recently been reformed and supported by the Red Cross through their Community Disaster, or excuse me, Community Adaptation Program, which operates in both Lake and Butte Counties. So there's mitigation resources, there's information in the plan with the building codes that the county has adopted, the updated state building codes, burn permits, they're available online via South Lake Fire Protection District. And I think that is going to be expanded, if I remember that, yeah, okay. Which is very exciting. The county has adopted a hazardous vegetation and our combustible materials ordinance, which we, it's probably, it's been in place a few years, we need to take a look at that and see if there's any updates that need to be made. And then outlines responsibilities of all citizens and property owners in Lake County, because everyone has to do their part to protect themselves and their neighbors. And then the appendices. This is the list of the five that are included. I'll just go on to the next one. The first one is Appendix A, which is Fuel Reduction and Prevention Priorities. This contains currently 145 projects with recommended treatments. Each one has a project area and description, what type of treatment, priority level, some are 1, 2, and 3, some are just 2, some are 3, and then if there's any notes. And then which communities, and you notice like the first four say all, so that means all of Lake County. And the reason it's left very vague is because we can't do everything all at once. And so when our partners are looking for funding, they're going to scope out an area, say it's in the CWPP, and that's what we're going to do, and they look for funding that way. And then Appendix B is the Action Plan. The bullets, I won't read them all, but these are the actions that are listed under seven main categories. Additionally, the suggested action items were derived from the 2009 CWPP, numerous community meetings that were held in '21 and '22, and input from local, state, and federal fire agencies. The partners that develop the action items include, but are not limited to, of course, the County of Lake, Lake County OES, the Risk Reduction Authority, all the fire protection districts, the Lake County Resource Conservation District, the Tribal Eco Restoration Alliance, the Clear Lake Environmental Resource Center, Lake County Fire Safe Council, Fire Wise Communities, the BLM Bureau of Land Management, CAL FIRE, Lake County Air Quality Management District, the Mendocino National Forest, both of our incorporated cities, our tribal nations, and of course, the public. And Appendix C has additional resources. Some of the resources are in the plan and are in the appendix. We wanted to put it, like for instance, when this was, I got the final draft, it still had, you know, Zone Haven, so it's, we need to be able to update the appendices without having, you know, just to change names and links. And so the Appendix C has all of these links for the public that's available in the plan. And then Appendix D, I just want to give a shout out to all of our fire wise communities that are in Lake County. And if anyone is interested in forming a fire wise community in your neighborhood, it only takes eight homes, so your neighborhood doesn't even have to be very big. You can go to NFPA, which stands for the National Fire Protection Association, NFPA.org, and they've got more information on creating a fire wise community in your neighborhood. And last but not least is the Appendix E, the Project Tracker. So currently Clerk secured funding and maintains an online ArcGIS map of CWPP projects in each fire protection district and the progress on those projects. So you can visit Clerk, C-L-E-R-C dot C-O for more information. And that is my presentation on the CWPP.
Is there anything you'd like to add, Chief?
Maybe on behalf of all the fire districts, I'm here today with Paul Duncan and Brian York. It's been a long time coming, and we are happy to see it get across the finish line, for certain. A lot of those projects, as you probably will hear shortly from Will or someone else, are in the process, and it's finally seems like we're getting somewhere. And it was a long, was a long journey. This was something that was put in my plate in 2018 when I became chief, and I know it was long before that. And so I'm happy to see it get across the finish line, and we can update that plan and move forward. There's a lot of work to be done.
Thank you. Vice Chair Simon?
Yeah, I agree. Being here today is a good day on this conversation. When I first came on board, you know, when the RRA was created by the board, CWPP, what was the CWPP? All right, so we were looking at projects and other things, Community Wildfire Protection Plan that was created back in 2009, which needed to be updated every five years, was sitting on a shelf in the county and, you know, not being updated as it needed to be. So I'm glad we now have it on the admin's calendar, that it'll be working through the process to make sure it's updated as needed. It won't be a document that we create and go back on the shelf. This is a working document that will help everybody in the county just move forward, including the fire districts, all the names that you read as we're moving forward. This is the roadmap and the plan to help us continue to build resiliency here in the county and protection of all of our communities, and hopefully for the long-term plan, tie into many of the conversations we're having about insurance, other things here in the county to help us move forward. The home hardening programs, everything that are coming, yeah, it's taken a while, but being here today is just an important day. I want to thank the faces in the crowd, setting out here, Magdalena, Will, Thomas, you know, all the fire departments, everybody who's been coming to these meetings and understanding the importance of it. So happy that it's here today, and Chair Paeska being one of the biggest ones driving this, and thank you for when you joined the RRA, gave it new life to continue moving forward. So a lot of hard work, but it's going to benefit everybody. I think the unique thing with this document, which I know most likely didn't happen in the last iteration, every government, every community, at least had an opportunity to get in and make comments on projects they'd like to see, even the tribes, on the updates that they need to do on their infrastructure, because fire knows no boundaries. Each one of our communities need to be safe, the fire lines we have cut, we got in here too, all the new ones that we've had since the fires have gone, and we'll continue to work on those. So, good job, everyone. We do need to vote and pass it, so that hasn't happened yet, but hopefully that will happen today, and then we will have the plan, the Community Wildfire Protection Plan for Lake County. And I know some of the grants recently are referring to this, this was just established as the adopted plan for Lake County. So thank you, everyone. Thank you, everyone, for the hard work. And Matthew also, because I know he's pushed really hard with the public comments to get us to this point.
And I couldn't agree more with everything you just said. This is the tool that we need to have adopted to apply for so many grants. We've kind of been able to get by this year because it's been in process, but we really have to have this adopted to continue to get the big grants, even the bigger grants that are coming up again this month, and just this ongoing cycle. So this is the most important tool that we have, and I'm super happy to have this on the agenda today and to get this wrapped up. Supervisor Green.
Yeah, thank you. I also appreciate all the hard work going into this, and I'm very eager to get this passed today, if only because I see on Route 38 and the Enhancing Fire Protection, a distinct call out, we have to work to improve hydrant systems throughout the county. And in my district, that very specifically means fire hydrants on South Main Street that we've needed for decades. I assume the 2008 version of this plan probably called out that very same thing. I understand it's difficult, and I understand the city's annexation bid didn't work out, but it's still basically the county's duty to continue to work on this, and I pledge to continue to do that. The thing in here I don't see, and it will be a living document, and I hope in future iterations, we can talk about fireworks and fireworks safety. We do have a disconnect between the city of Lakeport and our county. As the city has learned, every 4th of July, there ain't enough staff in the whole county to keep things down to a dull roar when the fireworks start running, and whether they're safe and sane or illegal, and it's a mix of both, totally overwhelmed by that. So I see in this plan, we call out, oh, we have to do fire safe councils, and we have to put code enforcement out there during events of high fire risk. Guess what? The county doesn't have enough resources, we could shepherd every fire official in the county, and we still wouldn't have enough to even begin approaching the issue of illegal fireworks. And by the way, safe and sane fireworks in the incorporated county are illegal fireworks. So I know it's kind of a tangential issue, but I see a lot in here about fuel reduction. What I'd like to see is some level of fireworks awareness, perhaps fire safe councils can teach fireworks safety, such as, don't do it in the county. If you're going to do it, go down and blow up Lakeport. But anyway, I think it's a teachable moment, and the fireworks word is not mentioned in this plan, and I think it should be in future iterations.
Thank you.
Supervisor Sabatier.
Thank you for bringing this to us today. I know it's been a lot of work and a long time coming, so happy to see it in front of us. There are a couple of things in here that I just want to bring up. I don't know what can be changed based on what's here, but I do know that there are certain things that aren't listed on there. Granted, it says all, so we could have stopped it all, but yet we got very specific on a lot of projects. But I also know some projects that happen all the time that I want to make sure are written in there for future purpose of grant funding in case that's needed. And that's the interface between, I used to live right there, between Anderson's Marsh State Park and the Meadow Brook area, Highlands Harbor area. Usually there's a strip of the park 200 feet that gets shredded down to ensure that there's a break, just something that I think is an important interface measure to take and to have available for grant funding. And also, the COE and EMEA always work together to do some control burns in Anderson Marsh State Park, and that's not written in there either. And just in case that this helps them obtain funds, I just want to make sure that that's in there. I also drop my kids off all the time at Lower Lake High School. That whole school system is surrounded by very vacant fields with a lot of brush and a lot of trees. We've seen fires there, the last cash fire had a little spot fire that happened right across the street where they were picking up. It would be nice to identify school systems that are in vulnerable areas as well. I do notice that it speaks of specific highways, but it doesn't speak of all highways. It would be nice if it just basically said all highways need to be, have vegetation abatement, so that if there's an issue with cars, spark, or cigarette, whatever the case might be, that at least we have the opportunity to, again, get those grants. So that's just things that I would like to see added. Here's one of my concerns on this whole thing. And you spoke to this in the presentation, Ms. Loggins, and I can't seem to find it right now. Let me go down to the appendices, because it's right there. And I'll just paraphrase, it speaks that it can be revised by the County of Lake and the RRA, but yet there are city projects within there. How can the cities make a request to revise but have to ask permission to revise for projects that they may need to do that are maybe being held back from getting grant funding? And I also don't see a signature for the cities within this document. So I'm kind of curious as to, are we following a state template for the CWPP? Has there ever been a thought of having other jurisdictions signing off on this so that they have some skin in the game, as far as saying, yes, we've approved this? But there's a lot within Lakeport, there's a lot within the city of Clear Lake, no signatures from either cities, and no ability for them to revise their projects within their own jurisdictions on this document without asking permission if they can go ahead and get those revisions done.
That's a great question. Both cities are members of the Risk Reduction Authority, so they would be able to make any changes through?
But so is the county, but it separates the county as the county and the RRA. And the RRA was not in the previous 2009.
Right.
In 2029 or '39, not sure if that will still be the case, or if it will continue. I hope it continues. But just want to, I want to give them a little bit more control of their destiny, of how they can handle their fire suppression and fire mitigation, and have at least some capabilities to make a request for a revision. Again, this whole purpose is to provide access to grant funding. There's a lot of work that's needed within cities and without the cities, and just curious how that can be done so that it's not a request for permission, it's they get to actually request for a revision. They get to actually provide a revision.
Vice Chair, do you want to, who wants to respond to that?
I was going to ask the fire chief sitting here, because I know that, you know, they're the signatories.
So, as Teri said, the cities are part of the RRA, and I think a discussion could be done there. But more over that, there are a lot of projects still out there that are not identified here. Most of these projects that were identified here were, are old. Some of them are not needed because the fires came through. Some of them need maintenance because they were done a long time ago, and we need to go back and revisit those projects. So there's a lot of projects that aren't really identified that I think that we can add to the plan at any time. Part of my task is I'm working with the fire districts right now to figure out what projects, you know, are their top priorities. As you know, we only have basically two fire chiefs that are, have been here a long, long time. Chief Sapeda and Chief Huggins, both from Kelseyville and Lake County, have been here a long time. I know Paul, Chief Duncan in the back has been in the South Lake quite a while, but Chief Wrights and myself are fairly new. I've been here a decade, but I'm fairly new. But a lot of these projects were even acknowledged before that time. So we're talking about what projects are priority, and so far, my conversations with other fire chiefs is that they, we talk about more projects that are not on the list than projects that are. And so how we go forward with the CWPP, that's kind of why the "all" was in there, is to cover that kind of spectrum of new projects that may pop up, is the best answer I can give you. But this, I don't see the cities having to ask permission, so.
It just states on there very literally, the County of Lake is revised by direction of the County of Lake or the RRA, then that's why I was bringing it.
Right, but the fire chiefs are the signatories, so they, the fire districts, which the cities fall in the fire districts, are partners in this document.
Yeah.
So that's why they sign as well. So that's how the project, so how we're setting this up to keep this as a living document, and I'm sorry, Vice Chair Simon, if you wanted to speak to this. In the past, it was the responsibility of the fires, the Lake County Fire Safe Council, which was funded through the RCD. So that is how the project, or how the project was being updated with the fire districts. So getting feedback from the fire districts, then ultimately, the county has to do the final approval. So how we're keeping this relevant is we've got a committee set up with the Risk Reduction Authority, which is going to be facilitated by Clerk, where there's going to be monthly meetings that go all around the county to, to have all the stakeholders come together, talk about projects, what needs to be added, what's been done, is there a box we can check, what grants need to be written, so that all of this information stays relevant, stays embedded in the community, so that we're getting community feedback, right, with the Fire Safe Council, with Clerk, and with the RRA, and the fire districts. So, so that's how we're keeping it relevant, so that we do not have to go through this massive update again, we can do modifications. The appendix don't need approval to be updated, so, so that doesn't have to come to the board. But when we want to do a major update again, or something that's not in the appendix, it will go through that committee, Fire Resilience Committee? Is that what we're calling it?
Yeah.
Fire Resilience Committee will bring the recommendations to the Risk Reduction Authority, which includes cities and fire districts and the county, and tribal members for, for of the Seven Nations and water purveyors. Once everyone agrees on those updates and how we're going to move forward, then it will come back to this board for approval.
Okay, I'd still like to make sure that the conversation occurs at the RRA to, what is the process to request for an update? Just to make sure that that's aware, because in my conversations that I've had over the course of the past weekend, there's some uncertainty on how that goes about. And so making sure that that it's available through the RRA to place it on the agenda for a request, I would suspect it's as simple as that, but just to make sure that that's known. And then just two last questions, there will be more specific CWPPs, is what I'm understanding, for each jurisdiction?
So there, so, what you're talking about is local CWPPs for a community.
Yeah.
All of our communities are different, even within Lake County, and so they may have more specific needs than, I may have a more specific need in the town of Upper Lake than South Lake does in the community of Middletown. So there's a thought process that, yes, more specific community can identify, and the fire districts can identify, kind of more localized projects within those communities. And you're probably talking to, about Chief Sapeda's, he kind of wrote one that's localized for the fire district down there, and it's just in review at the moment. It hasn't been approved by anything, but it may be adopted by his fire district, and then they can go forward. It still falls within the county CWPP, so still falls within those missions, and it's just more local.
Okay, and I appreciate that, and I cut you off from.
Yeah, I would, I would just say that, I want a clarification, are you talking about requests to update the entire? Are you talking about requests to update the entire CWPP or the project list?
I would suspect it would be a localized update rather than the entire overall update.
Which is in the appendix, which doesn't need to be approved by this board. So those projects could be approved in a moment's notice, almost, really.
Okay. And then I know that there is a different structure that is here compared to 2009, but in 2009, this document was created and then was not updated until today. I don't see anything in there that forces a update within the next five years. I've heard five years. Is that a state mandate? There seems to be a better structure to make sure we update it. There seems to be an option for revision, but what if things don't work out the way we want it and it ends up back on the shelf? What can we put in there to ensure that five years from now, there is a revision that is made? I don't want to hope, I want to make sure.
Well, one thing is a lot of funding is contingent on CWPPs either being approved within five years or 10 years. And so that is a driver behind it. And Clerk, which Will is here, and I'm assuming he will come up and comment, and talk about the funding that they have to update the, the projects and track them. And I guess it's tomorrow, it's actually going to be Thursday. The California Wildfire Forest Resistance Task Force is going to finally release the regional toolkit that will include Lake County. So that'll be released on Thursday. And Clerk already has been doing project tracking. So as, you know, the conversations, we'll see that we need to have it updated every, you know, no more than 10 years, but certainly every five years because so much will change. How that happens, I guess it's just a reminder on the calendar.
Well, we have a plan.
Yeah.
We just, we've been waiting for this to get adopted, and then we can start this implementation.
Mm-hmm.
I do want to make another comment on the localized CWPP. So it sounds like City of Clerk, or the fire district is working on one. I know the Cockberry Council is working on one. And that is something up to the community or the fire district to pull those projects together. There's funding available out there to do that, to have a supplemental localized plan for your area. It's totally, you know, we'd love to see that. We'd love to see more of that. We'd love to see all the engagement. So we, yeah, the updates, that's the driver. If we don't have it updated, then we miss out on funding. And so that's what keeps the wheels turning. And we've got to, you know, and we've learned that lesson the hard, hard way. It was painful for all of us in this room. We're never going to go through that again. So I know it won't always be us here, but enough of us are putting these measures into place to keep it moving forward.
Yeah, and for me, I have, I want to see the CWPP live as its own website, you know, so that it is much easier to update. And that will take additional funding. It doesn't, I mean, it can be under the county, you know, website structure, but to have it online is just so much easier for the majority of the population. You'll still have it printed with, you know, and consented as a PDF with links, but it's nice to have it all in one place.
Okay, Vice Chair Simon?
Yeah, obviously, I think you touched on a lot, but when we went through the CMAP process, obviously looking, expanding the members and other things for adding the cities was key to your question, Bruno. So it's not the county just moving forward with the fire districts on this, it's getting all government agencies at the table every month so we can talk through these processes. I think it's been talked through that this isn't something someone's asking for permission for so much from the county. The city is just, hey, these are priorities that weren't in there, we want it updated, we'd like to add these, and we can go through that process. So I think we're moving in the right direction, you know, but we need to continue along with the RRA. As we move forward with grant opportunities, such as one we got for our resiliency officer, when we're writing those grants as we move forward, some need to be participating and saying, hey, updating the CWPP, those are mandates through the grants. So I think that's also going to help us as we move forward, not just having it on the calendar and the admin office to make sure it's updated, but these are going to be mandates of some of the grants that we get going forward to make sure that these updates are happening. They're so important. I think you're going to hear from folks here in the audience how important this document is and understanding, you know, it's the roadmap moving forward. So I hope we can, you know, answers those questions, both Russ Kramer and, oh, we got two appointees, right, for Lakeport? Kevin and?
Kim.
Kim Costa, who comes to the meeting. So having those communications to move forward, I think, is very important. So hopefully with the answers you've gotten today, we can move forward with the approval. And if there are any issues, we'll make sure to bring those back. We will be doing an RRA update here pretty soon, so hopefully all the members will be in attendance with that, at least when we do the update, to continue that movement forward. But I think adding the cities to the RRA was a big step to help move forward with any of those types of projects and conversations.
Okay, Supervisor Sabatier.
And just that last comment, absolutely. Fire does not stop at a jurisdictional line, so we all have to work together for this to better keep our communities safe. Had it not been for the conversation I had with Chief Sapeda, I wouldn't have known about the localized CWPP. I don't see it mentioned in here. For those that want to be informed, is there a way to, in the future updates, add a part of how to, how to implement or create your own localized CWPP? Because it sounds like it doesn't have to be a fire district, it could be a firewise community that creates them. I just think it would be good education and information to have in there, again, for future use. I don't want to stop anything today. And eventually, every localized CWPP gets updated and revised to be added to this CWPP, or do they live on their own?
I think they'll live in the appendix.
They live on their own, but I like that idea. So when, if you make your motion to add an appendix F, that will be a placeholder for local CWPPs, because I know there's, you know, a couple are in process, and that way we won't have to change anything.
And maybe on appendix F is the process to create one?
Right.
Okay. That would be.
Suggestion.
Okay, well, I know we've got some, some people in the boardroom today, so I'm going to open it up for public comment. And if you want to come up, talk about the CWPP, you'll have three minutes, you can state your name.
Hi, Elaine Brown, educator and taxpayer. So my, my money's going towards this, so these are all dealing with fire and dealing with the county. And so I did some research after speaking last week on this and went and spoke to a firefighter in this county. And there's people here that could say yea or nay to this, but I'm just giving you the information that I got in my research from a firefighter in this county. In the place where I live, I was told that the tax base per household is $19 in that community versus the other places in this community at 180 to 200 per household tax base. I was told by that person that when they started in the 90s, that there was about 600 fires in California that were substantial to now, there are 2,500 to 3,000. And they've even had to bump it up to a category of extreme. So that needs some research as to why. I know in that line of that information, like in Kelseyville, they have four bays across from Riviera Grocery Store, and there's only two being utilized. And so with the addition of this extreme, I think that this $9 million could really go towards housing vehicles in these.
I just want to point you back to the CWPP plan that we're approving.
This all goes towards the $9 million. Please don't interrupt, I'm a taxpayer.
Excuse me, I need you to stay on topic.
And also, Lakeport has a fire station at the top of the hill that is not being utilized, which is a very strategic point in case there's fires going on. So I'm, I'm going back to the $9 million. I want to know how that's being.
Okay, but we're not talking, I don't know where you're getting the $9 million. I know that's from a project, a grant. This is about approving the CWPP project. If you want to read it, it's available on our website. This is the plan that we're updating. I need all questions and comments to be tied to the agenda item. It is a Brown Act law that we have to follow, public comment has to follow what the agenda item is. And you're veering off topic quite a bit, so I need you to pull your comments back to this plan.
All right, your plan, is it being covered by the $9 million?
No.
No. Where's the $9 million come into play with the grant that we're talking about that was mentioned in her presentation?
So if you want to speak with Will Evans after this, you can talk about that grant program. It is not on the agenda item.
All right, so you, you talked about a committee. Who is being, who is on that committee?
It's a subcommittee of the Risk Reduction Authority.
All right. Are you overseeing the $9 million? Does that have any play in what you're doing?
It's a nonprofit organization. Clerk received that funding.
All right, so what was the $9 million brought up then for?
Because they got that funding because of the CWPP actions.
So it does kind of tie into what you're doing.
And it has nothing to do with what I'm doing. It's what any organization can, any, any organization can take this and write a grant.
All right.
Okay, three minutes.
I would love to speak to any, my representative in Kelseyville, thank you.
That's me, thank you. Come on up, Joan.
Joan Moss, I have a question whether the general public understands this or knows about it.
Okay, so Joan, we have meetings once a month with the Risk Reduction Authority. If you want to come and ask questions and talk about the CWPP, you can there. The Fire Safe Council also has a monthly meeting. A lot of times it's talked about there. But really what this plan is, is our tool to apply for grants because it designates all the fuel reduction plans in our county. So that's what this is, that's what this document is. Have you had a chance to look at it?
We on Wildcat Road have been greatly affected by the fuel reduction plan.
Okay.
And we don't approve of killing live trees. Thank you.
Okay, that would not be in the plan, but appreciate your feedback. Anyone else wishing to give public comment on this item?
Good morning, Supervisors. Tom Jordan, Staff to the Scotts Valley Energy Corporation. The Board of Directors of the corporation supports the plan and recommend it for your approval. Thank you.
Thank you, Tom. Anyone else in the chambers wishing to speak on the CWPP?
Magdalena Valderrama, Seagull Springs Community Redevelopment Association Programs Director. I'm very glad that I wore my purple today because when I walked in, we were, I overheard the Declaration of Indigenous Peoples' Day and wanted to, and also the domestic violence and proclamation. I just wanted to say, first of all, thank you to all the indigenous peoples for the tending of the lands that you have given all these millennia that has given us all of this amazing beauty and resources that we all enjoy today. And I feel that I was one of the people that made a lot of noise about getting this CWPP off the shelf and out into the community again. And I see today as being a, a time when we can reengage and create a new stewardship future together. Cobb has not stayed still following the valley fire. However, we've been able to participate in all of the different meetings. Now, Seagull Springs Community Redevelopment Association is stepping forward to try and develop a local, hyper-local community wildfire protection plan. We very much appreciate how broad and robust the action plan was of the original CWPP. It is a very good model. I can tell you, because questions were asked here, as a member of the Fire Adapted Communities Learning Network, CWPPs are not required by any law anywhere. FEMA has adopted it as part of the strategy to move the country into communities taking much greater care and working together. And if it makes it possible for, for those of us to get grants and funding to take care of our own communities, then I'm always for working together that way. So I think I'll stop there. Thank you.
Magdalena, I want to thank you for all of the work that you've done over the years, really pushing this project, being involved, always being so willing to step up and help. You're one of the champions, and I really want to thank you today for all of that work.
I just want to follow up with that also, and Magdalena, you're 100% right. I myself had no idea what the Community Wildfire Protection Plan was. I was asking, there's got to be a plan somewhere, and you had brought it to my attention. So I just want to thank you so much because we were having conversations, we were trying to create a new JPA, and at the time, you know, so I just want to thank you. You do deserve the credit for really pushing this because I probably got 10,000 emails from you and saying, this is what you guys need to be looking at, this is what you need to be working on. And I just, you know, there are many other folks, obviously, but I would say specifically for me, you educated me and, you know, allowed us to help it and move forward, so thank you.
Right, thank you. You know, no project is going to go missing, for sure, but I think that we can continue to model what communities can do because governments can't do it all alone, communities can't do it all alone. We're going to have to find ways to work together.
Thank you. Anyone else in the chambers? Will, come on up.
Morning. Will Evans, Executive Director of the Clerk, Clear Lake Environmental Research Center. So while we're all thanking Magdalena, I also have to give my appreciation because if it wasn't for Magdalena, our organization wouldn't have been so engaged in making a difference in this arena. And I also want to thank the board for bringing this plan up today because, you know, one of the things, we've, we've done a lot of work, got a lot of funding, but one thing we can't do is adopt a plan because we're not a government agency. So just back to, it really does take all of us working together on these things to make a difference. Thanks.
Thank you. Okay, if we don't have any further people in the chambers, do we have anyone in Zoom? Okay, then I will close public comment.
Madam Chair, I just wanted to say, you know, my first year being on the Board of Supervisors, I actually served in the position, we were talking about the CMAP back then, and this, of course. And again, Magdalena, actually, there's a lot of folks here. Will was there, Terry, you were there as well from a different organization, and we were all, you know, bringing all of these ideas that are coming now to fruition up back then. The Fire Safe Council meetings were another, was another area where everyone collaborates. And so to see all this come to fruition is really, it's really a treat.
Thank you, Supervisor Crandall. Okay, so if there's no further comment, we're ready for action.
Yep, I am ready. And you're right, Supervisor Crandall, it's been so long ago. You did spend that whole year on there, and that was the year we were figuring out the Community Wildfire Protection Plan, what that meant to the county and all the government organizations. So thank you for your service, and I'm ready to make a motion. I move to approve the Lake County Community Wildfire Protection Plan and authorize the Chair to sign.
Second.
Would you like to make the amendment for appendix F?
With the amendments that were suggested today? That will cover, or should I just say appendix F?
That's fine, with the amendments suggested today in relation to appendix F.
Okay.
All right, my second will cover that as well.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Hey, motion passes. Hey!
Thank you.